Good evening. Welcome to the December 7, 2023 meeting of the Town of Southampton Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being held live and also via video conferencing in accordance with the town laws enactment of Local Law Number 14 of 2022. Our next meeting and those following also will be held in person here at Town Hall, and we'll continue to follow, to allow for remote participation. So please keep checking the town's website for updates and any new information. If you wish to view tonight's live meeting only and not participate, please don't join the Zoom meeting and instead go to the town's website for viewing access. With that, I'd like you to ask me, I'd like you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For those of you here with us tonight, in case of an emergency evacuation, please exit through the rear doors of this room to one of the staircases across the hall and continue downstairs and out through the main entrance. Do not attempt to use the elevators during an emergency evacuation. In case of a medical emergency, the automated external defibrillator and first aid kit are both located in the hallway on this floor opposite the elevator. Restrooms are located across the hall from this room. We'll begin this meeting with public hearings. We have applicants and members of the public here with us live and also standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. CTV will mute the speakers on Zoom until it is their time to give testimony before the board. Please be patient. If you find that you're having difficulties accessing the hearing, visit the town clerk's meeting portal and click on the instructions link. Also, for those of you in this boardroom, please silence your cell phones and refrain from speaking to one another as it interferes with the recording of our proceedings. Tonight, board member Helen Burgess is participating via Zoom. As a reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, and they will state their address for the record and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the board. In order to consider properly every application before us tonight, individuals speaking on a particular application have a time limit of three minutes. Also, before handing in any submissions to the board tonight, please make sure that the documents identify the ZBA application name and tax map number. The application name should also be written on your certified receipts. Unless otherwise stated at the end of an individual application hearing, all applications will remain open for written comments for all purposes until a date set. Those written comments can be addressed to the members of the board and sent via email, mail, and/or dropped off at Town Hall to the Board Secretary Candace Cowell. At this time, I would like a motion to approve the minutes of our November 16.
Second.
All right. Who made the motion?
Keith.
You did. Keith, okay. And done so. Mr. Tuttle.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Minutes are adopted. And Keith, could you now take us through the agenda for the evening?
Okay. On the agenda, number eight, which is Henry Toboda, 33 A. Seabreeze Avenue in West Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-354-495.2. I'll move to re-advertize for 1221.
Second.
Second.
You don't even have to vote. We haven't opened it.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay. Item nine, which is a new adjourned application. I'll move for that to be adjourned to our 11824 meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tuttle.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia. Chair votes aye.
Item 10 on the agenda, West Hampton Boat Works and Storage LLC. I'll move to adjourn that to our February 1, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tuttle.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Item 11 on the agenda, which is 911 Flanders Road LLC. I'll move to adjourn to our February 1, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tuttle.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Item 12 on the agenda, which is 2266 Montauk Highway LLC. I'll move to adjourn to our January 18, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Item 14 on the agenda, Stacy Russell, 10 Birchwood Lane. Ms. Gorg, I'll move to adjourn that to our February 1, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tuttle.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And then a secret resolution will be adjourned to our January 18, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Tuttle.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, the following decisions will be put off to our 122123 meeting. Matthew Frank, 16 Indian Avenue LLC, Roberto Camming, J10 Properties LLC, Joseph Lucio, Mark Smith &amp; Heather Cole, Eugenio Presta, Dilla Patel, Eric J. Belfi, Erin Appel, Alexander Veidman &amp; Production Holdings LLC. All to our 1221 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. The Robert Huldet, this is, I want to reopen that up to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Tuttle.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Now, I'll move to close with a determination later this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then I'll also move to reopen Lake Creek Properties LLC to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Tuttle.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Now, I'll move to close with a determination later this evening.
Second.
Mr. Tuttle.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
That's all I got. Back to the beginning of the agenda. Item one on the agenda, new application, Joseph L. Piazza and Kimberly A. Piazza, 136 Fish Cove Road in North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-78-1-8. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town of Southampton Code for a, one, for a proposed in-ground swimming pool, 330-11 Residence District Table of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory distance from the street, front yard setback of 43.7 feet where a minimum of 90 feet is required. Two, 330-76D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and 330-83C yards to allow the swimming pool to be located within the required front yard called Cove Neck Lane. Two, for the deck on the east side of the dwelling, 330-83A yards to allow the portion of, the portions of the deck that is higher than one foot above ground level to be located in the required front yard called Cove Neck Lane. Three, for the proposed deck on the west side of the dwelling, 330-115D5 continuance for an accessory side yard setback of 10 feet where 20 feet is permitted, and 330-76D and 330-83C to allow a portion of side deck to be located within the required side yard for the principal building on a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction. Can you pass that to John?
Are either of you attorneys?
No.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to raise your hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Could you please state your name and address?
Joseph Piazza, 136 Fish Cove Road.
Lisa Poyer, Twin Fork Permits, 288 East Montauk Highway, Hampton Days, New York, 11946.
Okay. So tell us about your application.
The exist, the proposed application is to, is for the existing lot. It has a lot size of 17,893 square feet, so it's located in the R60 zone. As such, it's an undersized lot for the zoning. The applicant is looking to legalize an existing front deck, as you can see in the photographs that I had submitted. Photograph one and two show the deck in the front yard. It's right up against the house. The deck is fairly minimal in appearance. It hides the air conditioning units, as you can see in the second photograph from the street view. It provides access down to the basement door, as well as provides access to the front door to the residence. If you go to photographs three, four, and five, those show the area of the proposed swimming pool for the property. And given the topography of the land, which is a little bit higher in this southwest corner, it slopes towards the corner of Cove Neck Lane and Fish Cove Road. So the south property line and the west property lines are a little higher than the area for the proposed swimming pool. And as you can see in one of the photographs, when you're looking to the west, there's a berm or more of a natural topography area that has a minor retaining area, so some large boulders. There's also an existing six-foot-tall fence on the property line, as well as existing screened vegetation. And you can see in the photograph that the peak of the neighboring house is just visible above the trees and therefore will be properly screened from the adjacent lots. And photographs six, seven, and eight are located looking down both directions on the west side of the house. Again, given the topography of the area and the existing fence and screening vegetation along that property line, we feel that the deck along the side of the house will be properly screened from that western neighbor. The house has had a couple additions in the past, and right now there are two existing little stoops, so to speak, along that western edge of the house. So the proposed deck is to provide additional circulation so that you don't have to go out of the house, on the lawn, down to the other direction to get back in if another area. It's just going to provide additional living area for the owner. Property had a variance that was Decision D10425 dated November 4, 1999, which granted front yard relief from 44 feet to 40 feet for a second floor addition. It was then amended April 16, 2015 by Decision D015057, which adjusted that from 44, sorry, from 40 feet down to 38 feet after the addition was constructed. There is a boundary line agreement between the property and the property owner to the south, and that allows the existing fencing that is located, shown on the survey, to remain. And they understand that if there's some change in the future, that's a private agreement between two residences.
Whose property is that fence on?
The 3P Corp.
Okay. So it's theirs?
It's, no, I'm sorry, it's the applicant's fence, but the boundary line agreement allows the fence to remain on their property, with the understanding that if they're asked in the future, they will remove it, no problem.
Okay.
The grant, will the grant of the variance cause an undesirable change in the neighborhood? We believe that it will not, given that these are common accessory structures to a residence. The lot is utilized as a residential property in a residential neighborhood. A pool and some decking is, is not uncommon to see on a piece of property here. Can the benefit sought be achieved by some other method? Given the fact that the property is undersized, it's about 29.8% of the required zoning, and the lot width is 100 feet in width, and 150 feet is required zoning lot width, and we're measuring that from, along the Fish Cove Road property as per the code. Will the variances sought be substantial? We believe the variances are the minimum necessary required to legalize the existing front deck, as well as to provide some additional access along the, I guess, the side of the property, which kind of acts as the rear of the house, as well as to provide a swimming pool for the owner. Will the grant of the variance have an adverse effect on the environmental conditions in the neighborhood? There's no wetlands, and there's no significant environmental features on the property. And what reasons lead you to request the variance rather than to comply with the Town Code? Given the unique size of the property, the fact that it's on two front, frontages, one along Fish Cove Road, one along Cove Neck Lane, and the undersized area of the lot, it's hard to provide a compliant location. And while the swimming pool is seeking relief from a front yard setback, it is going to be located behind the actual front yard setback of the residence as granted by the variance.
That's the 38 feet?
Correct.
Okay.
So I'm here to answer any additional questions that the board may have or the public. We have spoken with the neighbors, and they have no objections to the application.
In these photos, where, which photo shows where the pool would be located?
Uh, it's photograph two.
Two?
I'm sorry, three.
No, three, okay.
There's a large flat plain here.
Okay. And then you said that the property slopes up?
Yeah, and you can see in photograph four, that's where the garden area is, that it's a little higher in elevation there.
It goes up.
It's hard to tell from the photograph.
Are part of those planters on the neighbor's property as well?
Correct.
And that's a part of the agreement?
Correct.
Okay.
And that was submitted to the record for the original application.
Yeah, nothing's actually cemented in or anything. It's all just floating.
All right. Board members, anybody have any comments or questions?
You know, this property has received variances previously, right?
Correct.
And this, this feels a little bit like variance creep to me, which we, we try to You know, it's a fairly large deck that you're looking to put in the back there, and 10 feet where 20 feet is required is, is a little bit much for my personal taste. You're, you know, you're pretty much maxing out the property with these additional requests. So that's my comment.
How many variances have you received for this property?
Technically one, but there was a modification, so that was the second one.
Modification to the original variance.
To the original, correct.
So it was technically one variance.
Correct.
And that was the 38-foot setback from the.
Correct.
Yeah. That was actually before we owned the house. We actually took it over from her parents and made it, did the addition so they could actually live their life out with us.
Right. And that original variance was 1999, right?
That was when they did the original addition, because their uncle, his uncle actually, his brother used to live with him, and they took care of him. And then when they got older, we moved in and pretty much built a section for them so that we could.
But that was 1999.
99 was the original two-story, and then the 2015 was when we did the other renovation.
But that didn't require variance?
No, no.
Right. So it's just, you've done.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And I believe the setback relief would be down to, from 15.9 feet to 10 feet, given the non-conforming lot size and side yard to set setback, as shown on the survey.
From 20 because of the non-conforming, yeah.
Because it's a.
A non-conforming lot.
For 10s.
Okay. And it was, okay. I think it's a constrained lot. I think, personally, I, I don't have really strong objections to this. I think there was only one variance. While I appreciate Mike's point about variance creep, I think this, this isn't really indicative of some of the variance creeps that we see. So I'm, I'm not opposed to this point.
I agree with this.
Anybody else?
I have no questions. I have no problem.
I don't think there's much more to do to answer this. No.
I agree with Keith.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to be heard on the application of 136 Fish Cove Road? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to be heard on the application of 136 Fish Cove Road?
No one on Zoom. One other thing. In the comments, there was a discussion of the fence being in the right-of-way. Any fence within the right-of-way in adjacent property shall be removed and maintained with the meets and bounds of the property. I understand in adjacent property, you have a boundary line agreement.
Yes.
How about right-of-way?
Um.
Are there any?
What would be the right-of-way? Where is the?
It would be on the road.
There may be a small encroachment along Cove Neck, which we can, we can, that's a condition of the permit, we can relocate that.
I would adjust that.
Okay. Yes. It's a problem.
Okay.
Just a tiny sliver back along this.
Yeah, I can see you bend it in, but still, okay. All right. John, this is yours.
Okay. I would, I move to close the public hearing on this application, hold it over for written submissions on, by December 26 with a decision on January 4.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Mr. Tuttle.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm very pleased.
Okay, I am two on the agenda. 51 LNP LLC, 51 Illinois Oak Path and Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-66-1-6.5. Applicant requests a relief, filing relief from Town Code 330-6 General Regulations that references 330-11 Residence District Table of Dimensional Regulations for a proposed two-lot subdivision. One, for proposed Lot 1, a lot area of 80,000 square feet to 48,412 square feet. And two, for proposed Lot 2, a lot area of 80,000 square feet to 48,947 square feet. A principal front yard setback from 80 feet to 55 feet for a proposed one-family dwelling. An accessory distance from street, front yard setback, Illinois Oak Path, from 90 feet to 56 feet for a proposed swimming pool. And 330-76D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and 330-83C yards to allow the swimming pool to be located in the required front yard for the principal dwelling and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction. Can you pass that to Susan?
Okay. Mr. Menakasa, would you like to state your name and your address, please?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Board member chair.
Carl Menakasa, 860 Montauk Highway, Watermill, New York, for the applicant. A little background, we're actually currently in the middle of a subdivision process with the planning board. We did have our pre-application hearing, and a pre-application report was issued.
Do you have that?
I do have that. It's going to be the date in April. Obviously, we're here today primarily because we are seeking a two-lot subdivision, and we need variances for yield, that is, for lot area. The current zoning on the lot is R80, and we are asking for lots that are 48,947 square feet and 48,412 square feet, so 31,600 square feet of variance relief on the northern lot, and just about 31,000 square feet of variance relief on the southern lot. History is important here. Originally, and I just passed around the tax maps from 1983.
This is it?
As you can see, you know, those are the tax maps. Originally, this was two lots, back in pre, 1981, excuse me, which was before the last upzoning. There were two conforming lots, and then they were subsequently merged, not through process of the town or involvement of the planning board, but they were merged, and in the 2023 tax map, as you can see, they exist as one lot today.
How would they merge?
We, honestly, it was prior to my client being in there, we've done research. It looks like it was just a title merger.
And what year was that?
Common ownership or?
Common ownership, yeah. Nothing intentional. What year was the merger? We're not sure. It was sometime between 1981 and 19, and I think it was 1992 was the first tax map that they were merged on. We vetted this.
Typically, the assessor's office doesn't just put the lots together, so it wasn't.
It wasn't just an anomaly.
Yeah.
When was the original subdivision done?
This wasn't a subdivision. These were single and separate.
Oh, it never was a subdivision.
Never was a subdivision.
Always single and separate, okay.
Yeah, we vetted this with the planning board, with the planning department. We actually couldn't find exactly.
You know, I believe you, but you said it wasn't, it was by deed, but the assessor's office wouldn't review the meets and bounds and then put them together, so, and there's probably a house, excuse me, there's a house on the lot, right?
On the northern section, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't say it was just inadvertent by the town either.
Well, there was no planning board process for the merger. We know that.
Yeah. I don't think there has to be.
No. By inadvertent, I mean there wasn't an act of the town to merge.
Yes.
That's what I, okay.
Right. Okay.
And it was prior to my client's ownership. So now, we're looking to resubdivide them again, and we're looking to do it in line with the character of the neighborhood. If you look around the area, and you can see sort of on that tax map, the lots, and actually noted on the planning board's pre-application report, and I'll read from that report. The lots in the neighborhood range in lot size with small.
Excuse me, Carl, do we have the pre-application?
I can certainly provide this to you if you don't.
I don't recall seeing that.
It's not in the packet. So.
No.
I can get, if you want me to submit this in writing, I can submit it after, sure.
Well, we referred it to the planning board, so they'll probably kick it back with that.
Yeah, absolutely. So that report notes, and I quote, "The lots in the neighborhood range in lot size with smaller non-conforming lots to the south, east, and northwest, and larger lots to the west." You'll see adjoining lots to the east are actually smaller in size than the lots that we're proposing. This is because this neighborhood developed in, under prior zoning, which was R40. So it's totally in line with the character of the neighborhood to have this reduced lot size. We are actually in discussions with the Community Preservation Fund right now, who is very interested in acquiring the southern lot for preservation, if the subdivision were to be achieved and if this variance were to be granted. Jackie Felon, I've had numerous conversations with her. They are currently in the process of getting a, of obtaining an appraisal of what that second lot would be worth. And if that is the case, it is in all likelihood, we would be selling it for preservation to the town. I would note across the street is, is farmland. In the event that that doesn't happen, we are, again, proposing some relief for a development as the lot would be if granted non-conforming. And that relief is as before you today. Front yard, again, it's burdened both in, if it were to be created, it's burdened both in lot size and in the fact that it is a, two front yards. in lot size and in the fact that it is a, two front yards. We are asking for relief for a proposed pool from eighty, ninety feet to fifty-six feet in the front yard, from a, and for a home, from front yard relief from fifty-five feet, I mean, from eighty feet to fifty-five feet.
So wait, so you're saying that if this is granted, lot number two is, the plan is to sell it to the town undeveloped for preservation?
That is our plan, yes.
But if that doesn't happen, you want us to provide you with the variances so that you could also be ready to build?
Yeah, again, we can't control what the town ultimately does.
Okay.
What's the size of the pool?
It's a twenty by forty.
Did you say sixteen by thirty-two?
No, he said twenty by forty.
I might have said sixteen by thirty-two.
Maybe you should check here.
We'll check with the client.
Yes, thank you.
The houses, the footprint is somewhat modest in size, it's under two thousand square feet footprint. And certainly in character with the neighborhood. But again, the primary relief we're requesting is that with respect to lot area.
Do you have a copy of the report, if you, when did you have it?
No, I have it, yeah.
Five six. This was my project, so.
Okay. People are going blind on it right now, so. So Carl, I went, I went to the property. It's very wooded, and it's a very undeveloped area across the street, obviously, it's a huge deal.
Yes.
And actually, most of that land up there is pretty undeveloped, it seems. The house on the, on lot one seems to be quite elevated relative to the, to the house on lot two, the proposed house on lot two. Were you thinking of bringing in Phil or something? Because it's really, it starts up here and it goes down.
You're talking, I'm sorry, the lot?
Up here, this house, yeah.
The topography on the northern.
The topography on the northern.
There's no, we haven't had discussions about bringing Phil at all.
Oh, okay, so it would be, okay, because that was one of my concerns.
And we don't need any pyramid relief, so.
Okay, okay. So, other than the sixteen by thirty-two, the proposed pool, anybody else have comments?
No, I'm in.
Anthony, did you have some planning?
You know, I looked at the, I go right to the recommendations. You know, the planning board said that the, first of all, that their pre-application report would serve as any referral content to the ZBA. They talked about the driveway, they talked about the clearing restrictions that would be applied to the lots, and basic stuff, and then advised the applicant to proceed to the final application if they're successful with obtaining. You know, and just to point out to John, with the planning board, you know, if, you've got to look at this as a two-lot subdivision, right? And so you'd be creating two single-family residential lots, one additional lot for density. Should the town, and I don't know if the zoning board needs to, but if in the event that the applicant does go to the town for CPF, we just dealt with this today, the two-lot subdivision, the planning board then, if one lot, the house, one lot for preservation, the planning board waives the rest of the subdivision requirements because there's nothing being created at that point except for preservation. So, just to add that in, the process would change a little bit beyond that, and the planning board didn't seem to have any.
Does this require a transfer of development rights?
It requires we look into it, and we have. We've worked with Anthony, and we've, we've looked at the market, we haven't found a development right. But again, we are asking for a variance.
Not for the development right, you want, though?
No, you're not asking for a waiver of the development right?
Well, but the code only requires that we investigate, which we have.
Anthony, is that true, there's no development rights in this area?
I don't know.
We met, discussed, you know, can I tell you that, you know, I don't know what else, you know, lingers out in the development right world, because, you know, people are always continuously getting development rights certificates, so there could be nothing sitting out there today, there could be nothing in a year, in two years, there could be five sitting there because someone got a development rights certificate. In certain areas of the town where such properties exist where certificates could be issued. So I met with, you know, we looked to see where we could possibly get them from, from what I am capable of doing, didn't come across anything. This is very typical, because there's only a handful of people out there that hold the development rights certificates, as you all know.
No Gaza?
And there's no town development rights.
You can only do, so, you know, the mechanism, just saying out there, the board knows that the code says that you've got to at least investigate the ability to get a development right from the zoning board, to present it to the zoning board, and applicant always has the ability to do an affordable lot in which the town could provide the development right, and actually, wouldn't have to go to the zoning board, the planning board can prove it like that. So there are other mechanisms, but as you could say, we rarely get them, get development rights. There's just not a lot of them sitting out there, and the key is that they've got to be within the same school district, and there's, you know.
It becomes very difficult, which is why I think the code makes it somewhat permissive, you know.
Right.
What school district is that?
This is Sag, this is Southampton.
Southampton.
Yeah.
Have you heard from neighbors?
They were present at the pre-application report. I don't know if they're here today, but certainly they were noticed.
Okay, we did get a letter from a neighbor, have you seen that?
I have not.
Okay. It's not a continuous neighbor, it's a, okay. Any other questions from the board?
I have a question.
Do you have that letter?
Can.
Is that it?
I want to log, Mr. Katie, can we condition on offering it to CPF?
No.
No.
So we're being asked to provide relief on what exactly is allowing the two-lot subdivision?
Lot area.
Lot area.
And then dimensional variances.
And then dimensional, so two different variances.
Two sort of tranches of relief, yes.
We could, we could choose to offer the lot area and not the dimensional.
You could.
Conceivably.
Yes.
Neither, both, all.
Is there a reason that you have the proposed driveway on Noyak Path as opposed to Little Noyak Path? Is there a?
I, I, I don't think there's a specific reason, I think that's a less traveled road, and we thought maybe that would be less.
Isn't it at that point? I think it's.
No, it's, it's, I think it's paved up to a certain, but it becomes dirt.
I know it becomes dirt, yeah.
It goes a little bit up there before.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from the board members? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to be heard on this matter?
Yep.
If you could go to the podium.
Sure.
Are you an attorney?
No.
Can I ask you to raise your hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Could you please state your name and address?
Florence, Florida, my husband, he already is here as well, and we live at six twenty-two Noyak Path, which is one of the roads concerning this application.
Okay.
So we were at the planning board meeting, and we did follow up with letters after that meeting, as did my neighbor, Mr. Talisman, also on Noyak Path, and another potential neighbor has not built his property yet, Mr. Roskoff, I believe, also followed up with the letter, or his wife did at that time, so I wanted to make sure those letters were in the record someplace, after the planning board.
Well, no, we don't have the planning board, we have yours and Sydney's that were submitted to this board.
Right.
We don't have anything.
So, something that was submitted to the planning board has not been submitted to us from the planning board.
Yeah, they won't.
Oh, it just stays there, okay. When I submitted my letter concerning this board, I also attached a copy of the planning board letter that I sent, may not be important, but anyway, just to, I just wanted to impress that we were here, and we have been involved, all of us neighbors, and also, a neighbor who was not, could not make it feels the same way we felt, but, but I guess our concern is that the request for variances seems so extreme in keeping with what we had and when we built our property, and our second concern is that there seems to be a lot of focus on how the lots are smaller in the area, and yet, our lot and those lots north of me on Noyak Path, our lot is one point nine nine, next door neighbor is, you know, one point one eight, one point two five, and there's four acres there, so we're really concerned about the size of these lots and how it's being built on it, and also that it would create this subdivision, I think, you know, an area that, or a section that's really not in keeping with the area that we live in. If you've been there, you know that it's very wooded, as you say, and that's what has drawn most of us to living there, and we like it that way, so we are concerned about this, that it's not in keeping with that, and how's our, you know.
How would you feel, ma'am, if the, the lots were subdivided, but lot number two did become preservation fund land?
So then it wouldn't be built on, right?
Wouldn't be built on.
Right.
One lot would be, though.
One lot already is.
One already has to have.
One already has.
No, and that lot, we, it's always been built on, we knew the owner before this current owner, or the owner before that owner.
Would that be okay for you, if the second lot was not developed?
You know what, I would, I don't want to speak, yeah.
But you personally.
I would certainly bring it back.
You personally, how would you feel personally about that?
I'm.
No, sorry.
This is my husband.
All right, if you want to come up, then I can swear you in.
Just to clarify, if it were preserved, it would be no different than it is today?
Okay, yeah.
If it were preserved.
If it were preserved.
Property's located adjacent to this, or where's located?
Our property, there's a lot next to this property on Noyak Path, and then there's a house, Mr. Talisman's, and our house is, the house after that.
So you're three houses away.
Six twenty-two, yeah.
Three houses away, okay.
Yeah. One lot, one house, and us.
You know what I mean, so there's an existing house.
Are you an attorney?
I'm an attorney.
Okay, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you please state your name and address?
Robert, six twenty-two Noyak Path.
Okay, Robert.
Yeah.
Susan, is that my concern?
I'm sorry, hold on one second.
I just want to move closer to the mic, that's all.
Yeah, you're very tall, so you're going to have to, like, adjust the mic.
I bet he knows that already.
I know, you've had to do that your whole life, probably, yeah, go ahead.
A lot more than that.
Yeah.
I'm concerned because the variance is extreme, we're going from eighteen thousand to thirty-one thousand square feet, and I, I don't think it's consistent with what the whole area is about, to be very frank with you, that's the reason we're there, and that's the reason I believe most of the people who purchased homes there, you know, and this point eight is, this point eight property, I don't know where it, where it exists in the immediate area. I don't see anything that's less than two acres, four acres, six acres, eight acres, one acre. I don't see anything less than an acre, one point one acres in our area. It's just, to me, this is, this is extreme.
Sir, both of these lots are, one is one point one 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 acres, and one is one point one two four acres, so they're not below one acre.
One of them has a home on it.
Yes, but that's part of the, yeah, that.
And you want to put another home on it, and it has one point one acres?
No, 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 the other would be the second lot. So the idea is to take the entire lot, break it into two, and then build on the second one. But our question really is, if there, if that second lot, which is about one point one two four acres, if that was purchased by, with CPF funds and preserved, how would you feel about that?
Well, this is the first we've heard of this.
Same here.
And, I would have to think about it.
Would it be no change?
It'd be no change, it would stay the same as it is now.
And it would stay in perpetuity, you know, as no change. So, but that's, there's no guarantee that that's going to happen, but it's being pursued, I assume. Do you feel like you're going to be successful with that?
Jackie wants the lot, she says she's just waiting on it, and we want to sell it to her.
See, so, so I thought that we were just.
I mean, I can't guarantee anything.
No, of course not, no.
It has to go to the town board, but.
So.
Wait, let's just finish with, let's finish.
Okay. Why is the decision based on the, was it the Conic Land Trust purchasing this property? Why is that decision going to be based on this?
It's not.
Sir, it's not, it wouldn't be the Conic Land Trust, it would be the Community Preservation Fund. And sometimes they, they almost seem like the same, but they're, they're separate. One is the town-owned Community Preservation Fund, where the town managed. Conic Land Trust is a private, public, private, non-proprietary.
But, but the reality is that our decision will not be based on that, because there's no guarantee that that, in fact, would happen.
And if it does happen, would that affect your decision-making?
Well, I mean, you know, we're, we're interested in the fact that he's pursuing it, but I.
They can't buy it unless it's subdivided.
Right.
Well, one thing that I'm thinking is that I would love to see you withdraw the dimensional variance.
Understood.
Right now, just do the subdivision, pursue the preservation, and when that falls through, if it does, come back to us, and then we wouldn't hold it against you as variance creep.
I, I'm sure, that's an incredibly reasonable.
So in other words, we would approve the subdivision.
The subdivision.
Without the dimensions.
Without the dimensions, for the pool and the house.
And then we, and then if in fact the Community Preservation, then you come back to us with.
With the.
Yeah. I think that's an incredibly reasonable response. I, I can't commit to that without talking to my client.
Of course not, of course not.
But I would advocate for it.
We like that.
Do you have any other questions?
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there anybody?
You understand what we're saying, sir, right?
Yes, he does.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, both of you.
Anybody else in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application? Okay, so, Michael, you were saying something about your reaction?
No, what John, what John just said is, is kind of where, where my thinking was, although my thinking was actually a little bit more of, you know, approving it under the understanding that there would be no dimensional, you know, relief given whether or not the Community Preservation Fund purchased it, I mean, consider, but that would just be my bench, is it would have to be, if it was going to be developed and not preserved, it would have to be developed without relief.
So is the.
I see.
Is the, is the thought to close the hearing, I will presumably, if my client is agreeable, submit a letter withdrawing the dimensional relief. If my client is not agreeable, you could always deny the dimensional relief.
If your client's not amenable, also, we'll need the building plans and everything. Candace says we don't have any plans for the house in the file, so the board needs that, if it doesn't exist.
But are we able to?
Grant a piece?
Grant, grant a piecemeal, strike pieces?
Yep.
Okay.
Even if, even if the applicant didn't withdraw it, you know, many times the board has felt conflicted over certain parts and not other parts, and so as long as there's a consensus, certain parts.
I'd prefer to see you withdraw.
Sure. And I'll say that the house component was just perspective of the fact that we would have a burdened lot going forward.
Yeah, the board doesn't, the board doesn't ever grant variances for houses that don't exist.
Yeah, I think that we'd have to have the.
For houses that don't exist?
Right, the reality of building, of building plans.
You won't?
For hypothetical houses.
Yes.
All right, so what, as I.
So I, I think I see where the board's going.
All right, so as I understand it, you would withdraw, you would modify the application by withdrawing the dimensional relief request, keeping the subdivision request, and, and then we would vote on the subdivision request, and then subsequent to that, if in fact the Community Preservation Fund did not go through, you would come back to us with a presentation for variance relief if needed, and we would have building plans at that time.
Preferably not.
Is that clear?
That's clear, and I, I have no problem with subdivision relief.
Understood.
Okay, yeah, I think the subdivision relief.
Okay, so I think that's the way this will go, again, I can't commit to it without talking to my client, but I will submit written, a written response to that to Candace, presumably tomorrow.
Okay, how much time do you need?
Twelve twenty-four, it's not, right?
Totally.
Twelve twenty-four, no, we're not doing twelve twenty-one.
Twelve twenty-four.
Isn't that your holiday party?
Yeah, it is, yes, that's right, we're not doing that. So the first.
So January?
Out of Candace, we have fourteen on for January.
Are you wanting to come?
Are we, are we keeping the hearing open? I thought we were closing the hearing.
Uh.
We're going to do by written, because we want to withdraw.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
Do a break submission, yeah.
All right, let's do a written, and then by twelve twenty-six, and a decision on one four, okay, with the modifications.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
If, if in fact, however, you don't get agreement from your, okay, all right, that's not good.
You'll have to let us know.
All right, is there, is there a motion here? I make the motion.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, we, if you have to, hold on, you'll have to come to the microphone again, sorry, ma'am.
She's saying, is there anybody else, is there anybody online who wanted to speak?
I asked.
Oh, we asked already.
We asked.
I think that's what she was saying.
If people want, want to follow up with further comments who haven't commented, what's the cutoff date for that?
Twelve twenty-six.
Twelve twenty-six.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so I make that motion.
Second.
All right, who seconded?
Everybody, all of us did.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Mr. Toddhill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. All right, Chair votes aye, okay. Moving right along. All right, that one's, that's a good.
Shoo for the moon.
All right, Keith, we're up to three.
Are we?
We are.
We fly along with Adam's not here.
Item three is James Remkus and Elizabeth L. Remkus. Nineteen Bayview Avenue in New York, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash nineteen dash one dash three. Applicant requests relief in the following conditions for the town code. One, three thirty dash eighty-three A, four yards, to allow a proposed depth higher than one foot above ground level to be located in required front yard on the southeast side of the dwelling. And two, for a proposed in-ground swimming pool, three thirty dash eleven, residents district's general dimensional regulations for accessory distance from street, front yard, setback, Harbor Avenue, of thirteen point seven feet where fifty feet is required. And two, three thirty dash seven sixty, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and three thirty dash eighty-three C yards, to allow the proposed in-ground swimming pool to be located within the required front yard for the principal building, Harbor Avenue, and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction. Nice to see you again.
Evening members of the board.
Please state your name and address.
Brian Nasset, twenty-three thirty-one Monso Highway, Bridgehampton, New York, appearing for Mr. Downs, whose application this is this evening, for the Remkusses. I've handed in some photos that are marked as exhibits showing the existing conditions.
There's just one set, right?
There's just one, yeah, they're just different photos.
Yep.
Property is located at nineteen Bayview Road, it's a corner of Bayview Road and Harbor Avenue and Sag Harbor Cove. So while the code provides for Sag Harbor Cove becomes the front yard, Bayview Road would become the rear yard, Harbor Avenue is another front yard. So we are pretty constrained in our fifteen zoning district. Harbor Avenue, you'll see from the photos coming, is partially paved, partially dirt. It's used for access for the community to launch paddleboards, kayaks, or otherwise. More used as a right-of-way, it's not used for access to the subject property or any of the neighboring properties, doesn't provide ingress or regress or otherwise. The photos that have been handed up show the location of the proposed pool, which is a ten-by-twenty shallow pool. Questions?
Did you, you only provided one copy?
I only was given one copy of the photos, I couldn't see in the bundle.
Oh, are we just passing them along?
We could just pass those, I can get more copies. When I was giving the application, I only got one photo. I just handed the three, I apologize for that.
So we've got two.
All right, wait, here.
So the three are, sorry, the three are three originals that show the position of the pool and a view from Harborview Ave looking west toward the property on the other side of the trees that would be the proposed swimming pool.
All right.
You're doing great, Chris.
We're trying, we're trying, we're inching, I have a plan on coming back. I have Mr. Benacasa to come back from that, so I was hoping to, not have to do this, but for Mr. Downs, I'll do it.
Really?
So.
Oh, my God, all right.
We'll do it. Properties improved by a top family dwelling. Accessory structure which benefit from certificates of occupancy and certificates of compliance. I did note on the write-up that I received that there were some questions with respect to not the application, but with respect to the existing garage, house, and other improvements of the property, which do benefit from a C of O and a C of C. I'm not sure how that happened or how that got there. You know, those were constructed with permits and closed out with permits, so the discrepancy in the surveys from when the garage was built to the as-built garage. I went to the property, you could see in the photos, the property, the garage has been there for some time, and I don't see it migrating a foot and a half, so I'm not really sure why it was proposed and built and C of O'd at fifteen feet, and now it says it's at thirteen, thirteen point five. The only thing I could say is, in that corner, it's not part of the variance, kind of NASMA variance, because there was a certificate of compliance on the garage, so that, that has been closed out, so I would believe it not to be in the purview of this board, as it's not an illegal structure, it's a structure that benefits from a permit.
Right. It's been there a long time, just like that.
Okay.
It has been there like that. The location of the pool adjacent to garage is to maximize the distance from, this is a bulketed property, so letter of non-jurisdiction, we're doing activities that is, that are more than fifty feet landward of the bulkhead. But because Harbor Avenue is a road, that that setback becomes a larger, had, if Harbor Avenue was a right-of-way or side yard, the setback for a pool would be ten feet, which we would meet, basically have three front yards here with the water and, and two others. And we're working on existing conditions, so they're not looking to improve the house and make it a large house, they're not looking to add additional dwelling or other space. It's a small pool, it's ten by twenty. If you took, if you look at an aerial or, or a survey of the neighborhood, there's at least a half a dozen pools in the neighborhood. It's adequately screened, the applicant proposes to put the pool equipment inside the garage for sound attenuation or otherwise. I would say that the, while numerically, the variance may look significant, based on the five-factor test, and benefits the applicant weighed against the detriment to the neighborhood. I don't see there being a detriment, the, it's, Harbor Avenue is basically a fifty-foot right-of-way, so people walking by, no one's congregating there, it's not a beach, it's not a park, ingress and egress, and people park cars there. The applicant really, because of wetlands and otherwise, would have no other place to put a pool. Benefit to the applicant is obviously substantial, being able to fit a pool in their existing property without having to redesign and rebuild the entire facility.
And it appears that that side, that boundary of the property is heavily screened.
Very heavily screened, that's right. The photos you saw there.
There's even a twelve-foot hedge.
I was there, I was there today.
There's hedging, there's trees, we'll have some more of those photos.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say to you, I was there today. I don't have any, any issue with this, it looks consistent with relief that we have offered in the past for properties that have a small road going down the side of it.
They're, they're maintaining two and a half feet above groundwater.
Right.
Pictures of the deck of groundwater to find where out that is.
Right.
The deck's being a little raised, and that's part of the variance application to keep the pool above groundwater for that area.
Have you heard from the neighbors?
I have not. Mr. Downs passed on the file, I mean, didn't convey that he had heard from any neighbors. I'm not sure if there are any neighbors here or otherwise, I don't have any correspondence from neighbors.
Okay. Any questions from the board members?
No.
I think it's a good application, I got no problem. Katie's going to go first.
They go to Mike, Mike's the lead.
Okay.
That was just to show the screen, it was, there's different trees, there's different trees, for hedges, yeah, we're not, we don't want to be seen in the pool.
And, and on the other side of Harbor Avenue, how far away is the, the other house? It looks like it's considerable.
Picture of that, I can send it to the record.
That shows how far across the other side is Harbor.
I think it's about a fifty-foot right-of-way, at least, some of it's paved at least forty feet, just, I have never measured it, but.
No, you mean Harbor Avenue.
Yeah, to the neighbor.
Yeah, but how far is the, how far between where that ends and the neighbor's house begins?
That's this photo, I think that's about fifty, I think the width of Harbor is about fifty feet, and the house has to have a setback.
Yeah.
And the house is setback from there.
It looks like it's considerably setback from there.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, there's something in here that talks about the house and the garage and the inconsistencies, but the one thing that we are noting is the corner clearance, and we're going to ask that they commit to that corner clearance standard of three thirty one oh three, complying with the town of Southampton corner clearance regulations.
For the existing hedge, is that what the question was?
For, yeah, the fence and the existing hedge, just to please do that, we don't want anybody.
It's this corner right here.
Getting surprised coming around the corner.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's, I'm sure that if that's part of it, that they would not, I haven't talked to them, but.
Okay.
Well, it looks like they have enough room to do it, so it's not like it's going to be.
Yeah, it doesn't look like there's much in that, in that area right there. And it's something we've become a little more attuned to in recent times.
And as far as the, you're working with the building department to rectify the issues that they raised about the garage, or we're just going to ignore that?
I haven't, I just was informed about them when, I'll speak to Mr. Downs about it. I don't know what can be done since there's a C of C and a C of O for the house, I don't know if they can.
Yeah, that's the thing, sometimes they like to add it to the ZBA decision now.
I mean.
Just to clarify.
If we do, I'm happy to clarify, I don't know how.
So in other words, we would grant the variance at thirteen point five, as opposed to?
Sometimes that's what the building department will know, they'll say, even though the structure has a C of C, you know, to clarify the record, the variance should be, you know.
Would you follow up with the building department to make sure that we clarify the record as they require?
I'll ask them if they want to address that under any and all other relief.
Okay, that would be.
And then a written submission as to that for the file would be great.
We could do that.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on nineteen Bayview Road, New York? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard on nineteen Bayview Road, New York? Okay, hearing nothing, Michael?
Okay, so you got a couple of things to address there, but I think you can do it through written submissions, right, don't we?
Yes.
Absolutely. Anybody have a problem with that? Okay, written submissions, if you would please, if you'd like a decision on January fourth, please have them back to us by December twenty-sixth.
Second.
Mr. Daley.
We know what you're going to be doing during Christmas Day, you're going to be writing ferociously.
I'm sure.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Mr. Toddhill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair votes aye. Okay, thank you, good to see you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good to see you too. Former Mr. Vice Chair.
So they are going to on that one.
Okay, item four on the agenda is S.A. one twenty-three LLC, two sixty-three Surfside Drive in Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash one seventeen dash two dash twenty-one. Okay. Applicant requests the following relief to construct a covered, screened, unconditioned second-story breezeway to connect the dwelling on this lot to the adjacent lot to the west. Three thirty dash one fifteen D continuance for a principal minimum side yard setback from fifteen feet to zero feet, and a total side yard setback from thirty-five feet to eighteen point four feet. And three thirty dash eighty-four D pyramid height for a proposed encroachment, the amount of three thousand one hundred ninety-seven point seven seven cubic feet, and a not performing lot, there is no relief necessary.
What as jurisdiction? Do you want to open the other one too?
Yes, please.
Can you read the second one as well, Keith?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can.
Number five.
I can do that.
Okay, good.
Will you? All right, we're going to put them on, two forty-nine Surfside Drive LLC, two forty-nine Surfside Drive in Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map, nine hundred dash one seventeen dash two dash twenty. Applicant requests the following relief to construct a covered, screened, unconditioned second-story breezeway to connect the dwelling on this lot to the adjacent lot to the east. Three thirty dash one fifteen D continuance for a principal minimum side yard setback from fifteen feet to zero feet, and a total side yard setback from thirty-five feet to twenty feet. And three thirty dash eighty-four D pyramid height for an encroachment, the amount of two thousand three hundred and thirty-seven cubic, point nine four cubic feet, and a not performing lot, there is no relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
Hello, how are you? Are you a member, are you a lawyer?
Chris Coy, Orange Core Architects.
Okay, do you want to raise your hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Chris Coy, nineteen thirty-six Monso Highway, Bridgehampton.
How do you spell Coy?
C-O-Y.
C-O-Y, okay. All right, tell us about these two applications.
Let me, for the record, put my name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Collins.
That's okay, that's okay. I know you knew it, that one, right?
Yeah, yeah, I am.
Okay, that's okay, congratulations, I think.
So do I, I don't know.
We'll see.
We'll see.
Timothy.
Oh, thanks, okay.
Timothy S. Monso, forty-one meeting House Lane, Southampton, I've counseled to Burke and Sullivan. Chris Coy, you've already been introduced to, he's the architect on the project, and I brought him along in case you have some questions about the design or whatever, he can answer those. The application involves two single and separate lots located on the south side of Surfside Drive in Bridgehampton. It's bordered on the north by Surfside Drive and the south by Atlantic Ocean. These lots are lots created by the subdivision map of Sag Pond Estate, Section One, which map was approved by the planning board and filed on November twenty-eighth of nineteen sixty-one. At that time, the fifty-seven ordinance designated the areas a K-one zoning. Pertuent to the seventy-two zoning ordinance, these lots are now R-sixty. These lots, although single and separate, and have been found to be so by the building department, are in common control. So the LLCs are in control of the same individuals. The lot oh nine hundred one seventeen two twenty is known as two forty-nine Surfside Drive and consists of fifty-six thousand four hundred square feet. It is rectangular in shape and has a hundred and twenty-five feet of road width. At the present time, there is a dwelling and accessory structures being constructed at that location pursuant to permits. We have all the permits, building permits, health department permit for the low nitrogen and sanitary system, and the coastal erosion permit. The other one, one seventeen two twenty-one, is known as two sixty-three Surfside and consists of seventy thousand eight hundred ninety-six square feet. It is rectangular in shape as well, and a hundred and twenty-five feet of width on the road. There is an existing house presently undergoing interior renovations at that location, all with permits. The properties are located on the ocean front, they're in a B zone. The can't, the applicants have a large family, so what they're trying to do is connect the two houses so that it can be used as one compound. In order to accomplish that, they need to get a connection between the houses, and the breezeway is the proposed way to do it. Originally, we went to the building department and we asked to merge the lots, which would do where all the variances are necessary. However, that's a violation of the code, and history tells us that neither this board or the building department is going to allow two residences to be placed on one lot.
But if you connected them by heated, a heated breezeway, it would be one house, right?
Yes.
Yes. But we don't want to lose the two houses.
Okay, but then, so then it's not, so then it's. Well, that makes sense.
No, what happened, okay, but let me tell you why we're doing it this way. We're doing it as an unconditioned breezeway for the simple purpose that if we connected it with a conditioned breezeway, we have to take the house that's existing on two sixty-three and raise it to the zone.
That's fine, but you said that the building department wouldn't let you do it because there would be two houses, and that's not.
There is an option to do that, to combine the two houses to make them one.
If we raised it.
And you're talking breezeway, or you're talking elevated walkway? Because what if you were to connect the two houses with a heated elevated walkway?
Then we have to raise two sixty-three to up, and that's an.
And it doesn't matter whether it's on the ground or it's up. Right.
And, I'm not sure.
If it's a breezeway that's located on the surface of the property.
Can't do it because we're in FEMA zone, we wouldn't be allowed.
So this is a second-floor causeway between the two buildings.
Yes, it meets FEMA requirements. And if I misspoke about that, I didn't want to mislead the board. Technically, if we did that, but we would have to raise the house.
Which house, which, which one?
Two sixty-three.
So that's the existing house, as opposed to the one that's currently under construction?
Not right, not, that's, that's raised, that had to be raised.
That was already raised.
Oh, definitely, we had to meet that. But after we, we had many months of conversations between Sean McDermott, the FEMA regulators, State Department, Courtney Nation, we went through the whole thing back and forth, trying to how to skin the cat here, so to say, and this is what we came up with. So basically, in order to accomplish that and keep the lots separate and the houses separate and not raised up two sixty-three, we need a zero lot line on each of the lots, and we need total side yards, because that little bit of a hundred and thirty-five square feet opening going across is actually what's only going to be intruding into the side yard, but it is part of the principal structure, so we have to count it that way. So that, that's why we're doing it that, that way. So on two sixty-three, we wind up with a zero lot line on the west side for the breezeway, where fifteen feet is required, and a total side yard of eighteen point four feet, and where thirty-five feet is required for that total side yard, and pyramid. and pyramid relief of 2496.48 cubic feet. On 249, we have the same zero lot line where 15 feet again is required and a total side yard of 20 feet where 35 feet is required for that total side yard. So.
So wait, you quoted, so 233794 is being 263?
Yes.
But if on this application, it's 249, and for 263, it's advertised as a pyramid encroachment of 3,100?
You should have a memo. Yeah, that's changed.
That was changed.
Three million.
Yeah, it's actually, yeah, 31,000.
That one is changed by virtue of a memo from Arti.
Now, what did I say?
2496 on 263, as per a memo from Arti.
Yeah.
And then it's 23, right, then it's 2337.
2337 on the other one.
Yes, that's right, right on, did I say? Yeah, that's correct, right, with the way I said it? And then, just as a background, what happened here is the architects, because the house is not being lifted, they took the pyramid from the lower angle where the house sits, which is compliant in 2012, but not now. So when the house was built in 2012, it complied with the then regulations, but they've been increased. But they took from the actual, where the house is now and will remain, but Art looked at 33084D2 and determined that it should be taken from today's required elevation, which reduced the amount of pyramid that we need in that area. Now, this is not the first time an application similar to this has been before the board.
That's going to be my question.
In 2004, Keith Tuttle, author, I believe it was him, authored a decision in Hampton Bay or in Lynn Avenue or something, I'm not sure. But in any event, it was almost identical, except that was on the ground, this is in the air. But the relief there was side yard, total side yard, and almost 7,000 square feet of pyramid relief.
What were the conditions of that decision?
The conditions were that we would put a declaration on that would say you can't separate, they have to stay in common control, if they don't, the breezeway has to come down.
Okay.
And I have that copy of that decision, along with the declaration that was imposed on that property as part.
It is true.
But a breez.
He was asking if that was accurate, and I was saying it is accurate. I thought I printed it out too.
My question is going to be, what if the property's ever sold? That wasn't my question, but you just answered it. So if the property is sold to separate, they'd have to come down.
Absolutely, we couldn't do, you couldn't separate that out because then, you know, who's going to have?
Unless you're friendly neighbors, I don't know.
You'd have to be very friendly, probably.
That still creates huge problems. I have a problem with this application. And my problem with this application is, first of all, just on its face, you're trying to get around a law that is on the books, and we all know that you, we can't even grant a variance with regard to it. And the second thing is that in the event that one or both of the properties are to be sold, it's not necessarily that they're going to be sold to the same individuals, and I just see this as a possibility for creep because a second-floor causeway, it's going to be very expensive to demolish.
Well, I think that would be the issue with the people buying it.
Yeah, I mean, quite frankly, once this thing is in place, the possibility of two people owning the property and having to take that down, that's not the way it's going to be. And he has no, he has no intention of doing that. And the declaration goes in the county clerk's office, so if you buy that property, your title company is going to tell you immediately what you're getting into.
So you're suggesting that you would do it on the condition that, with the variance as a condition of the variance, it has to be removed upon sale?
If it's sold and split and there's no common control, it would absolutely have to be.
I mean, I'm not saying yes or no, but that was how the other one was. And it was filed, like if you look in the Suffolk County Clerk's records, you can see the covenant, they filed it against both lots.
Right, but a breezeway is an easier thing than a second floor. I mean, then we're talking about demolition with the potential to affect integrity. I just, I think it creates more problems than it sounds.
Mr. Leonard. Let Chris speak to that.
If I can speak to that, Mr. Leonard. In fact, the second-floor unconditioned breezeway is easier to remove because it's purposely designed to be breakaway at either end with a, and I have the engineering drawings here, with a neoprene plate that is designed to slide and break away if, if, it's 17 feet above grade, so this is never going to happen, if it did, we're all underwater here, but we have to design it that way. So if it were to be, if a flood that high were to hit it, it would break cleanly away from both buildings and not damage the building. So having been designed that way, it's actually very easy. Basically, you take a sawzall and just cut it down and crane it away. I mean, it's actually easier to take that away than a breezeway built on the ground because a breezeway built on the ground has to have a foundation. This has no foundation. So it's connected at these two neoprene points, one at 249, one at 263, and it would be very easy to remove in the event that it would be removed. But I agree with Tim, I think in this location on the ocean with this kind of value in this property, whoever buys this is going to buy it as a compound because this, if we get this variance, this would be kind of a priceless thing. So no one's going to, no one's going to buy one or not buy the other. I mean, I don't see that.
And he was willing to merge it, but they won't let us do that without raising that house. Okay? And the breakaway components of this, well, I'm not an engineer, but it was all engineered and it's been looked at. It had to be designed so that the FEMA regulators were satisfied that it was breakaway and it would break away without hurting or influencing the dwellings.
Without damaging.
So it wouldn't pull the dwellings down or make them shake or damage. And it took a lot of work to get that to that stage.
You know, I have hesitations about this application also. You know, it's odd, and it asks for a fair amount of relief. I'm not, I, you know, I don't know why you just can't put a path between the two houses and move back and forth. I mean, you know, I'd really like to hear a little bit more about why it's necessary because the way I understand when we grant variances, we do it on the basis of need, and, you know, it's an exception to what the law says, as John was saying. And so to me, I'm still not convinced that this, you know, that this is a variance that we should grant.
Well, the problem is, is that you'd have to go outside and walk.
Yeah, that's a real problem.
Well.
Well, why is that?
Well, it's not weatherproof, but this is a weather-protected, covered walkway. So no matter the weather, it's not enclosed and heated, but no matter the weather.
It's convenient, there's no question it's convenient. But granting variances on the basis of convenience.
It's a luxury.
I have no problem with it.
Pardon me?
I have no problem.
Why don't you have a problem with it?
With the condition that if it was sold, separate ownership, it should come down because it's not affecting any of the neighbors, I don't, they own both. I just don't, I don't see the issue.
But it's a workaround of a law that's on the books.
No, it's not a workaround.
And that's the problem that I find with it.
It's not a workaround of the law because.
Everything we do is a workaround of the law on books.
It is, it absolutely is, and it stated that as that in the application.
There's a code, the code also, excuse me, but the code also allows for me to have a house, and then I can put something on a vacant lot that I own, right? So there's a recognition that these situations come about.
It's a merger without doing a merger. That's the way I look at it. It's a merger without doing a merger. And I'm not sure that that's a door that we want to open.
But your job is to balance the benefit to my applicant, okay, against any detriment to the health and welfare of the community. And I don't see where you can make that argument that putting these two houses together, rather than have somebody walk out inside in the snow, is detrimental to the health and safety of anybody. As a matter of fact, it might be just the opposite. But.
Tim.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
Wait a second, I think Ms. Burgess maybe has some comments. Helen?
You mentioned that as one of the guidelines, but it's only one of the guidelines. It's not every, the only thing that we consider. And I do agree with John on many of his comments, and I have a problem with this application as does John and Susan. So I just have some concerns that I think need to be addressed and have not been addressed yet.
Helen, what would those concerns be?
Pretty much what John has mentioned. I thought that he did a very able job of discussing what the problems with this application are. There's nothing that I could add other than it has some problems.
Could I ask a question?
And Tim, I would like to know the address on Lynn Avenue in Hampton Bay, where you said a similar case existed. If you could perhaps send that to a case.
He has it.
I have the whole package here, including, there's also a pyramid relief down the road on Surfside I'm going to give you, and also some setback relief to the house to the west of these properties that was granted. I'm going to hold them up in three packages here for you.
Michael, you had a question.
Yes, Mr. Coy. So this is described as elevated breezeway, which is screened?
Yes.
So it's, it would have screening, like screen porch or not glass?
Like a screen porch.
Can't have glass.
That's correct.
You can't have glass?
Well, it's unheated, yeah, so.
And unheated and screened, so.
Unconditioned, so we want the breeze to blow through, but we want to keep the bugs out.
Okay, so, but in inclement weather, that would be less desirable, clearly, so.
Yeah, it'll be cold in there, but it's not a hangout space. It's a, it's a walkway.
It's a walkway.
You walk through there, you're on the other side in 10 or 12 seconds.
And all of that was driven in order not to have to raise 263 up?
Which actually, as a practical matter, is impossible. You can't raise 263.
It's just architecturally impossible, it's on piles.
Understood, understood. What would be, there wouldn't necessarily be any measures to ensure that that wasn't enclosed and conditioned in the future, you know, but.
Well, that would be up to you guys on this board, I guess.
Yeah, well, we're not going to go around looking for things like that.
Would be code enforcement.
It would be code enforcement.
Yeah, it would be code enforcement, yeah.
But that's like anything, you know.
You know, I wanted to ask you also.
I'm sorry?
Since we're going to be, if we would grant a variance, I would assume that upon sale of the property, the variances would be eliminated. Side yard variances.
And the pyramid, it would all go away with the breezeway.
Yeah, but I, but, I mean, but the variance itself, it would go back to original variance requirements.
Yeah, what you, we meet every other, we meet all of the code on the two houses, just the breezeway. The houses are all permitted, they're all, they're all within the code, and the setbacks, whether you use 410 or use the K-1.
Okay, but in other words, if we were to, if you were to sell it to separate owners and they were to take the breezeway down, that the, not just the covenant that they'd have to take it down, but that the setbacks would go back to original and they would have to conform from there on?
Absolutely, the variance is.
All the variance.
We're only getting a variance for the breezeway.
No, I understand, but it's.
For nothing else.
But you said it's part of the principal building, so therefore, there's a zero, you know, property, you know, you're at the zero property line. So it's part of the, you know, the total side yard and the minimal side yard. So you would have to go back to the original variance.
And you could craft this in language with your decision to say this applies only to the breezeway and not to the rest of the structure.
That's what I said, I was kind of, that's what I would be, if it was separate ownership, it would have to come down, which I think, like you said, this is a unique property.
Because the two houses do come along.
And then your council and myself and, or whoever takes this would come to an agreement that would be comfortable with the language, which would be similar to what was done in 2004. I don't, I'm not too crazy about that language, but it's close.
What, the covenant?
Yeah. It's just, it doesn't, it's a little fuzzy on the language, but we can work that out. And show it to you, see, and you have to be comfortable with it.
It's an unusual request.
It is.
So you can understand why there, you know, there might be some reaction to it, but.
I personally would like the opportunity to review what you submitted in terms of the variance from 2004 that Keith was involved with.
Absolutely.
And, thank you, Keith. So I'm not, I mean, I'm not prepared to close the hearing on this. I really feel that I have to take another look at everything. I want to contemplate, I want to take a look at the materials that you submitted.
That's your prerogative. I do want to, for the record, about a half hour before I arrived here, I got a call from the neighbor to the east, Robert Pruzan, and he was, he wasn't voicing any opposition to the application, but he was having a problem getting on.
Okay.
So I talked to Candace, I called him back, told him again how to get on. I don't know if he is, but.
Okay, well, we're going to ask if there's anybody in the audience or on Zoom, so.
He's not going to participate, he just wanted to watch.
Oh, he just wanted to watch.
So I told him if he had a problem, the video would be available, and he said, fine.
Okay.
And then, so I did want to put on the record that I talked to him.
Okay, did you hear from any of the other neighbors?
No, nothing.
I mean, I went to the property, I mean, it's going to be massive. I mean, really massive, they're two huge, you know, residences. And with the breezeway, I'm glad to hear it's screened. I had a feeling it was glass, so I'm glad you clarified that.
It cannot be glass.
Okay, I'm glad you clarified that, but it's.
Well, there are only, 263 is 7,700 square foot, 249 is 7,500 square feet.
They're huge.
Well, that's not huge for houses on the ocean.
Well, all right, maybe, maybe you're right, but they look big to me, and they take up, you know, a fair amount of the property, obviously.
Well, they're both as bright.
And, you're right.
Yeah. I designed both of them, so.
There's no other variance requests that you have on these, on this new addition or anything?
No, all of these lots, if you look at the tax map, all of these lots are part of this subdivision.
Yeah.
And they're all.
Boxey, yeah.
They were subdivided for the ocean, not for wind.
And everything that exists before is now coming down, so I understand.
So together, they would be less than 15,000 square feet, actually, just less.
Probably not without, not with the breezeway, though. That might put them over the maximum square footage of a house.
But it's not considered.
But there's not too high, it's.
It's going to be separate in the middle, it's like, yeah, you're right.
Yes, I know, but I'm just saying.
And it's not conditioned space, so technically it doesn't count.
I understand that, but I'm just saying that would be another reason that would be problematic for merging the lots and having it be one big house.
Well, it could be, it could meet the, I don't know what the total limit.
Yeah, they'd have to take out.
I didn't think of that. Target of truth, but.
But Tim, just to sort of respond to what John was.
I didn't think that was an issue, but.
Just to respond to what John was saying about the workaround, what, I think the sense that he's getting, which is what I was thinking first, was if you were to merge the lots and you were to connect the houses with the conditioned space, even though the one house, you know, has a CO and, I guess, complies with FEMA previously, right?
You're right.
Because you're just by connecting them with the heated space, that would be what, substantial construction or substantial addition, and that would require the existing house to be raised.
Right.
So it's, it's not, the house right now complies, like, you know, because you have all these houses out there that don't comply with current FEMA. So it's not, it's not necessarily a workaround, because it's not that they don't want to elevate it, it just, they don't have to right now. The only reason they'd have to is if they merged them and connected it with the heated space. Is that correct?
It also couldn't really be done because 263 is on piles. So to raise it, you'd actually have to destroy it.
Okay, I just.
Can I ask you another question, though? If you were to add an addition to 263, which is not FEMA compliant, right, because it's on piles, would you, what would you have to do with the addition?
Raise, we would have, it would have to meet.
So. So you would have to...
Current FEMA, yeah, the house...
All right, so if you, so you know what I'm trying to get at?
But there aren't, we're not going to do any additions. We're fully, the house, we are already doing the rehab now.
I know, but if you consider this breezeway an addition, and if it were on ground level, would you have to raise the house?
I think, okay.
I don't think so. I don't think you'd have to raise the house, because it's an addition. And as long as the addition was met FEMA, the original house wouldn't have to. Do you know what I'm saying?
It wouldn't meet FEMA, it's got to be way up. That's why it's up where it is.
It wouldn't meet FEMA for a lot.
Okay, all right, so then it would... Okay, any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment about 263 and 249 Surfside Drive? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard on these applications? All right. This is Keith's, but Keith, I would welcome the opportunity to take a little bit more time and have him come back.
Okay, well, come back next December, how's that?
I think that's good.
Not me, baby.
And that's from Keith?
No, when will you come back?
We have to...
When's the first meeting in February 1st?
Yes.
How's that?
What's that?
How's that, Susan?
February 1st.
January 4th.
We're full on January 4th.
You have January 18th. You have...
January 18th.
You have 11/12.
How does January 18th sound?
Well, I'd rather come back on the 4th, because I have another one on that 3310, that we, the affordable housing thing.
Well, but that won't be on.
Won't be on.
Because we still have to do the lead agency.
The what?
We still have to, we haven't coordinated CEQA. So we put that on for lead agency.
Ah, okay. But you're satisfied that I gave you the phone?
I just asked Anthony, yeah. I didn't know.
And anyway, we put that on for 118.
Right.
Yeah, 118, you retired, we're not retiring. We... I'm tired, I'm retired, thank you.
Okay, so...
So I'll move the holder over for all purposes to 118/24.
January 18th.
Okay. Mr. Toddhill?
Hi.
Mr. Macedonia? Mr. Daley?
Hi.
Mr. Leonard?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Never know.
Chair votes off.
I might not even be here.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Is there anything in particular you would like me to address in writing before the 18th of every, I don't want to...
I think what I would like to see is what are the conditions we would put on this? The covenant, the reversal to the original variances? You know, if you want to submit something that says that this is your clients' understand that this would be the conditions of it, that would be helpful for me.
But I did put the covenant...
You gave me the examples, but I want to hear what, you know, you would do for this particular application.
Okay.
Okay. John, did you...
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, gentlemen, thank you.
And you know what? And also, if you could give us the cost of removal?
The cost of rising of the...
No.
No, 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 the cost of removal of the causeway.
I don't think that would be borne by whoever buys it.
No, no, I know what you're asking.
You know what I'm asking.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
I got it.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Good night.
Did we ask if any, we didn't ask?
I did.
Oh, you did?
I did, I covered.
Nobody on Zoom.
Are you back up, Carl?
How are you given a call?
This is it.
Don't promise me something you're not going to keep. Give me one second.
What?
Okay, item six on the agenda is Brian J. Farrell as trustee of the Joseph G. Farrell Jr. Irrevocable Children's Trust. View slash A slash D. 1056 Sag Road in Sagaponix at the canon tax map. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code. One, for a proposed two-story dwelling. 3311, Resident District Table Dimensional Regulations for a principal front yard setback of 25 feet, where an 80 feet is required. Two, a principal minimum side yard setback of 12 feet, where 30 feet is required. And three, a principal rear yard setback of 15.4 feet, where 100 feet is required. Two, for a proposed in-ground swimming pool. 3311, for an accessory distance from street front yard setback of 35 feet, where 90 feet is required. Two, and then accessory rear yard setback of 11.4 feet, where 30 feet is required. And three, 330-76D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts and 330-83C yards to allow the proposed in-ground swimming pool to be located within the required front yard for the principal building. And three, for a proposed detached garage. 3311, for an accessory distance from street front yard setback of 25 feet, where 90 feet is required. And two, an accessory rear yard setback of 10.1 feet, where 30 feet is required. And three, 330-76D and 330-83C yards to allow the proposed detached garage to be located within the required front for the principal building on a non-conforming lot and any other relief method.
Board has your exception. Your question is Susan.
Anything else?
Evening again, call from Acosta 860 Montauk Highway. Watermill, New York City. Applicant, local... The applicant is requesting dimensional relief for construction of a two-story residential structure with accessory structures, namely a pool and a garage. The lot sits within the CR 120 zoning district, but is only 15, is less than 16,000, only 15,745 square feet. So generally, roughly speaking, about 10% of the required lot size. So it's a burdened lot. As you can see by its shape, it also has an unusual shape, which makes development very difficult, namely at its, you know, at the southern portion of the lot, it becomes incredibly narrow. At its widest portion, it's 83.75. So any development would have, would be constrained to that northern half or third of the lot as a result. It also sits along, its longest yard is right on Sag Road, so it has a front yard setback that burdens... If you were to comply with existing zoning setbacks, your setback would be off of the property. The neighborhood is developed with these sort of unique lots. As you can see, adjacent to this lot is a large parcel, which is owned and preserved by the town of Southampton. To the, that would be to the west and south. Below that is another parcel that's preserved by the town of Southampton. And across the street are two larger lots, both of which are conforming. Just north is a not, another non-conforming lot, though the degree of nonconformity is far less than this lot. And that home exists roughly with R40 setbacks, as that was the zoning at the time the structure was built. This is, was an R40 zone prior to the 83 upzoning. So in compliance with the neighborhood, you know, this, these, again, this lot is very small. The only really companion lot on this side is the one directly to the north, which exists with reduced setbacks as well. And then there's a lot down south, which, again, this lot, you can see the tip of it here, is a reduced, is a residential, residentially improved lot with reduced setbacks by virtue of a variance granted in 1997, which most compelling with respect to this variance and granted front yard relief to, I'm sorry, rear yard relief to 20 feet. So a substantial reduction. That was in 97, when this was a CR 120 zone. Lot sits on the west side of Sag Road. As I mentioned, it has 391 linear feet of street frontage and a maximum width for, at the very northern tip, of 83.75 feet. We're requesting relief from 3311 or the dimensional table of the code for a modest home approximately 2,207 square feet in size. It has a total of six bedrooms and four and a half bathrooms and an accessory garage and pool, as you can see. The pool is 14 by 28, so it's a very small pool. The front yard setback, where 80 feet is required, we are asking for the structure, for the principal structure, 25 feet or a variance of 55 feet. Again, if we were to comply with that front yard setback, at the widest point of the lot, we would have three feet from the rear yard to build. The rear yard setback is 15.4 feet, where 100 feet is required. Again, I don't think I need to go through the constraints of this lot. And the side yard setback, 12 feet, where 30 feet is required. As I mentioned, in the area, directly across the street, there was a variance of a rear yard setback from 100 feet to 20 feet, which is in line with the relief we're asking. And just north is a lot, let's get the address for you. 1083 Sag Road. And I'll recite some of the dimensional setbacks of that. The front yard is, again, this lot is far less burdened than our lot, roughly twice, twice the size. And the front yard adjacent to Sag Road is, spans merely 30, it looks about 7, 100 feet, whereas ours is 391 feet, linear feet. So the front yard setback there is 67.5, but again, not compliant with current zoning and certainly less than current zoning, but again, given the far less constraint on the lot. The side yard setbacks are 25 feet and 24 feet, respectively, for the principal structure. And the pool is 26.2 feet from the side yard. So admittedly, the relief we're asking for is more than the northern lot. It's in line with relief granted to the lot to the south. The neighborhood is very sparsely developed, so the impacts are going to be minimal. As you can note here, much of the land has been preserved. Across the street is a home compliant with setbacks, but that actually has a lot area that's compliant with zoning, 100, more than 120,000 square feet. So when you consider the fact that this is, the way this parcel has developed over time, certainly it's not a self-created hardship. Given the burdens on the lot, I would say the relief request is not substantial. Given the surrounding area and the precedent set both by zoning, both by variances from this board and by the development of the lot over the course of time from previous zoning, the relief request is not substantial, is in line with the character of the community, is not a self-created hardship, and I think is a, in light of all that, a reasonable request for relief for this board.
The survey you handed us, is this, how is this updated?
Yeah, it's a different from the original.
Is it different from what we provided in our packet?
I don't know.
It doesn't look like it.
I don't think it was. I think I was supposed to make sure you had each of that.
Did you see the request from the building department?
We did.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Now it says Saginaw.
We created a new hamlet of Saginaw, yes.
I'm having a hard time locating this on Google Maps. Is this on the east side of Sag Road or the west side?
It's on the west side.
It's on the west side, yeah.
So Sag Harbor is up this way and Sagaponix Village is this way.
Right, but it's, yeah, okay.
It's really far up.
The lot points to Sagaponix.
No, I've been to the property. It's way up there, and it is sparsely developed, that's for sure.
Yeah.
No question. I have a question.
Sure.
Six bedrooms, how many parking spaces do you require?
If you look on the, yeah, we're compliant with parking. You can fit three here, one in the driveway. There's two, there's two parking areas. One here, just adjacent to the home.
Yeah.
Where you can fit three cars. And then the one here, where you can fit three and the garage.
Okay. And having two entrances to the property on the road, is that, is that an issue?
It's not, there's not a zoning issue.
It's not a zoning issue.
I don't know, I'll get to check with the highway department.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
One question I had is, in the application, it's under area variance number 14, page three, it says a side yard setback of 11.9 feet, where 30 is the minimum required by code. I didn't see that anywhere on the survey, but there is in the ad, an accessory rear yard setback of 11.4. So I'm wondering where that 11.9 side yard setback is? I don't see it on the survey.
What was it, 11.4, oh four?
11.4 is the rear yard, and that's over there.
Yeah, okay.
Where's the 11.9, or is that a mistake?
Let me just, you're looking at the original application?
Yes. Page three.
Well, usually, the, you know, the applicant may say X, Y, and Z, and then the building department will confirm it on the survey. So maybe, you know...
Right, I'm just wondering, is that a, is that a request?
No, I think the request is probably 11, 11.04 for the pool, is what you're talking about, right?
Well, there's a difference. This says a side yard setback. The 11.4 is a rear yard setback.
The side yard setback is, it's this, it would be, the only side yard setback we're asking for relief is to the northern lot. And I actually don't see that on the survey. So I think that 11...
There's a 12.
Oh, there's the 12 right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's what it would be, is 12. It's not 11.9, it's 12.
It's 12.
So it's a tenth of a foot distinction. So it's a tenth of a foot distinction, but I guess the surveyor sharpened his pencil.
And you're asking for, you want two driveways?
To comply with parking, the proposed development is, considers two driveways. One for access to the home and then one for access to the garage.
Marge will confirm the parking, because that was one of her notes, but she didn't have the floor plan, so she'll look at the floor.
We have the floor plans available now.
That's what I'm saying, though, she'll need to look at them, she'll confirm the parking. Maybe there's too much parking.
There could be too much parking.
Five, five spots are required.
Yes.
She might have too much parking.
We may have too much parking, we can always take away parking.
So Marge is going to confirm that for us.
I have, the board now has the floor plans, yes.
They're teeny tiny, though, do we have big ones?
Yeah, I mean, here they are.
Oh, no. No, we need full-size.
All right, then we'll get you full-size plans.
Teeny tiny.
I'll deliver full-size plans by Monday.
I mean, because you're so close to the property land, it could be a pyramid relief.
Yeah, there isn't, but we will provide that.
Yeah, well, we need to know that.
The second story is staggered, so it's not, this, as you can see on this, it's not right, it's not a box.
Okay.
Right.
But we'll get you the full-size plans.
Okay.
And Marge will review them?
Yes.
More importantly. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Is there, Helen? Helen, go ahead.
I was wondering if this, I don't know what your intention is, whether to close the public hearing. I would prefer, if possible, to have the case adjourned and have Carl come back with the documents. Because I have a concern about this property, as a very, very small piece of property, as Carl has done. And to put up a six-bedroom house and a pool, and a garage, fall on this little piece of property, I'd just like to see more documents, especially everything that Marge has asked for, because I just have my concerns. And Carl, I do not see a house, you refer to it as a modest house. I don't think there's such a modest house, especially for such a modest, I would say that the land is a modest piece of property. I don't consider the house a six-bedroom to be a modest house. That's just mine.
Okay.
So when we can adjourn it, I mean.
Is that the pyramid analysis you have there, Katie?
This is, yes, we have a pyramid analysis in hand on December 4.
Yes.
Yes. But we also need, you know, the building department needs the, what Candace was saying, the plans, the floor plans.
You have the floor plans, we'll get you full-size copies of that. Those are elevations and a pyramid analysis, I'll get you full-size copies of that.
This is a very burdened piece of property, and Helen's right, it's incredibly small, I've been up to see it. I mean, it's just, it's a sliver. And, you know, you are trying to put a lot on the property, you know.
It is the biggest lot in Saginaw, I will say.
It's the only, it's the only property.
What's the total square foot into the house?
2,200.
2,200 square foot.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application? Please come forward.
Would you step to the podium?
And are you an attorney?
I am not.
Good for you.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Lisa Rosen, 1083 Sag Road.
Okay.
Could you pull the microphone up a little?
Lisa Rosen.
Lisa, is it R O S E N?
Yes.
1083?
Just excuse, Ms. Rosen contacted her office, she has the land directly to the north that we were discussing.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so you're the property where you have a little bit more?
A little bit more.
Yeah, okay.
But, no, I've owned the property for 14 years now. And I had a friend who owned the property, and I purchased it from her, and she owned it for five years before that. So I've been spending my time, all my spare time out there. I don't live there permanently, but I did purchase it for future retirement. I am now at that point in my life. I didn't anticipate that that lot, being the size that it was, were likely to ever be developed. I, one of the reasons that I bought the house was because it is so wooded in that area that I have a lot of privacy and a lot of peace. And I do have concerns about building on a lot that size, many of which you have expressed just right before I came up here. The lot will be 12 feet from the border between our houses, and I am concerned with the possibility of my privacy being encroached, as well as noise encroachment, as a result of the close proximity of the houses. Not to mention building a two-story home, which could become now part of my view. So.
Pyramid, right?
I, for what it's worth, feel that this piece of property is absolutely too small to be developed. And I'm extremely concerned and upset about the fact that I didn't know anything about, well, I, there was a sign out on the road for Farrell Building to put something on that piece of land. I contacted them as soon as I saw that, but was never contacted back by them to discuss it. And I, I'm sorry, but I'm a little bit nervous.
It's okay.
I also only got a notification about a week ago, less than a week ago, about the hearing. So I was away, I didn't have much time to prepare for the hearing, so this is just coming from my heart. And I just feel very strongly that this is not a property that should be developed.
What was your address again?
1083 Sag Road.
1083.
Because my house is an odd number, that's where it starts, the odd numbers switch over to that side of the road for some reason.
But she is right above it, right?
I'm literally the home.
And I think you've been in touch with Jackie from my office.
I did. She wound up sending me the documentation because I couldn't receive it.
Is there anything they could do, any screenings, any plantings, anything that would alleviate? Because something's going to go on the property, it's going to be developed with something. So was there something that conversation you could have that could alleviate some of your concerns with your privacy? Sometimes we, parties get together and I suggest a certain kind of plantings, and they'll plant what you may like, and we've done that often.
We're happy to discuss that.
Sure. So it's something that.
I think what Mr. Mastonio is saying is that, you know, this is a piece of property, and people have property rights and they have property development. They are asking for a considerable number of variances, which we will take under advisement. But, you know, there is the possibility that the property will be developed, and you should probably meet with Mr. Benicasa and whomever to see if there's some way to alleviate some of your concerns.
Sure. And often the parties can come together and reach an agreement where both sides are a little unhappy. You're on the same side, isn't that right?
Right, yes.
Yes, you're just to the north.
Just to the north.
I'm literally to the north.
She's literally.
On the property to the north of this property.
Right, right, okay, so there seems to be, I mean, what I'm looking at the GIS, it looks like there's quite a bit of a wooded space between this lot and your home, is that correct?
There are some woods there, yes.
There's some woods, okay, so you wouldn't be looking at that property, would you?
Well, you can see through the woods.
Sure, lots of stuff happens in winter.
There's so much we can accommodate, I mean, you know.
That's why I suggested some type of planting, some type of, you know.
Okay, so.
Eighteen to 20-foot evergreens was substantial.
Mr. Benicasa is going to be speaking with you, and let's see what you come back with. And as Ms. Burgess has asked that we adjourn this hearing and have Marge have a chance to take a look at the full-scale plans. And us to take a look at some of the other things that you've submitted, so. How do I keep track of things, how they progress?
You'll know the date.
You're going to get a date right now.
And feel free to reach out to my office.
And/or check with Candace. Yeah, and then just, because, yeah, sometimes these things get adjourned and delayed, so it'd be good to check with Candace on a consistent basis. Okay.
And thanks for your comments, you did fine.
Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard? Okay, thanks, Ken. Okay, it's mine. So, all right, what are we doing here, Candace, in terms of adjournment?
I'm going to 13, I'm on the 18. I wanted to just put me on.
Okay.
How about the first of February?
Two one.
All right, so we're going to go with February 1st, adjourned to February 1st. And we will see you at that time.
February 1st.
All right, I have to take a vote. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonio. Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess? Chair votes, all right, okay, we'll see you on.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. I'll see you guys have a good Christmas. Happy, happy, happy merry.
Now we have two more. Okay, yes, we do.
I'm seven, this is Rodrigo Escalante, 712 and 718 Flanders Road in Flanders.
Oh, Mudabar.
Self-accounting tax map, 900-143-2-50 and 51. Applicant request for relief from town code 330-82. Lot width to allow flagpole width from 20 feet to 15.2 for lots two and three of a proposed subdivision that creates three lots from two combined lots and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction?
Hello?
Hi.
Could you please raise your hand? Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Daphne Vaughn, Surfside Environmental Planning, 225 Montauk Highway. My riches, I have too many addresses.
I mean, that's a problem.
I don't know. So, this is a subdivision that's currently under review by the planning board that is for proposed three lots, which will include two vacant flag lots that will be behind the existing one-and-a-half-story residence that's fronting on Flanders Road. The properties are currently known as 712 and 718 Flanders Road in Flanders and are located in R15 zoning district. The two lots currently contain a combined road frontage of 150 feet on Flanders Road. The existing structures are proposed to remain with the reduction of the circular driveway for the existing residence to be changed to one access to the existing residence on Lot 1 on the west side of the property, and a proposed common driveway for access to lots two and three proposed on the east side of the road frontage. Lots two and three will both be flaglot parcels, which will comply with both lot area and zoning setbacks for new development, with the exception of the flaglot width of section 330-82, where the proposed flaglots for lots two and three are both shown at 15.20 feet, where 20 feet is required, requiring a variance of 4.8 feet each. The common driveway is proposed at 14 feet wide and will utilize the existing curb cut on the east side of the existing circular driveway for the current residence. The pre-app report was adopted last July and was just extended by the planning board, partially because we're in need, sorry, in need of this variance. And also, we're working with the health department currently for approval for the subdivision. I believe the town engineer has approved the common driveway plan, to my knowledge.
How about the fire department?
I think you said it was approved by them, right? It was dealt with.
Yeah, I believe that it was. We've made all the revisions and submitted them. I think we even paid the engineering fee.
How about the fire department? Am I right with it?
They refer to the fire department and the fire districts through the planning board, so.
Oh, do they?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, 14 feet for a common driveway is the typical size.
Yeah.
Okay. What's going to happen to the circular? Is it going to stay?
No.
You're getting rid of it?
Yeah.
And this entrance is becoming part of the.
No, I understand that, I was just.
Yeah, so then the other side of the circular is going to remain for the access to the current house. So this is going away.
The other side of it is, to the board, when we do these that are a little bit short, because we've done them as, you know, 10 and 10 sometimes, but we still have 30 feet there. We still do a 20-foot wide easement through there. So we're still going to get the 20 feet wide and 15 feet pavement or whatever it is. So it'll be in conformance with.
Yeah, it's actually a 30-foot wide common driveway utility easement so that there's room for utility installation to both of the back lots. And then there will be, you know, the drainage installed, a little swale is proposed as well.
All right, any questions from the board?
Candace, did we refer this to the planning board?
Planning board, I plan to mention. Still need responses.
All right, so, all right, so wait, let me just catch this. You've referred it to the planning board, you're considering it, you've done a pre-application.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You can proceed with whatever dates, because I will have them.
Okay, okay. All right, that sounds good. Any questions, anybody in the audience wishes to make a comment about this application of 712 and 718 Flanders Road? Anybody on Zoom? Hold on, Helen, do you have something?
Let's tell him the case.
Daphne?
Yes.
I, sort of, the documents that I see here is the page six of recommendations.
This is in the planning board?
Yes, on the pre-app.
I just want to know how, what's happening with those recommendations?
Oh, well, those are the standard recommendations that we would have to fulfill to submit a final application to the planning board, and those are all things that we are currently working on or have completed, actually, but cannot proceed until we have either this variance or, and, excuse me, and our health department approval. So I'm working on that right now as well.
I wanted to clarify that, and I have viewed the property several times, and I have no problem with that. Now that I know that Daphne will take your old recommendations.
I'm on the case, Helen.
Thank you so much, Dan.
Okay, so Helen, you're the lead on this.
Well, we'll keep it open, we can take it open, and, what would you close the public hearing?
Right.
And keep it open for, if you submission till December 26th, with the decision on January 4th.
Second.
Ms. Burgess? Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Mastonio?
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill?
Aye.
Chair votes, all right. Thank you, Daphne.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, you too.
We're not going to see you again?
No, we hope not.
One more. It's always good to see Daphne. Absolutely.
Hi. Okay, do you want to raise your right? Oh, I'm sorry, Keith, you have to call this case.
I know that. Thank you.
I, this is a re-advertise, that's why.
Not my first rodeo.
But it is mine, so please excuse me. Makes people like that.
Appreciate it.
All right, this is 13, on the agenda hammered in Chahanaz Mudabar. 28 Barbar Road, Sinacot Kills. Applicant request for relief from town code 1.
It's a holdover.
It's a holdover.
Right, so I will read. I was going to read it to P. Susan, you know what I mean?
Okay, great. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Lori, well, it's Sheriff for Land Planning Services, representing the Mudabars. My business address is 231 Pantico Road in East Hampton.
Okay, so tell us what's going on.
All right, so we were here on June 26th for the original hearing. At the time, we made our presentation, we're asked to submit nine copies of all exhibits and the code section, the variance standards, which we did on August 31st. In that submission was the correspondence that further explained how the basement was constructed in the flood zone with all permits in place, the cost estimates totaling $287,000 to raise the house and add three feet to the foundation, clearly a financial hardship for a completed house that had had all of its inspections except its final inspection and was waiting for a CO, all the permits that were issued by the agencies leading up to construction of the house, the FEMA and elevation certificates, the engineering report supporting our request for the variance, the code section and variance standards that Katie asked us to submit, copy the house plans and photos of the foundation and the basement. So as you recall, and as I'm repeating myself, and I don't want to go too far into this since I've already made this presentation, the builder and the architect are both deceased, we don't have any way of explaining how this happened. We had every single permit and three inspections by the building department till the final inspection, when they decided that the basement was in the flood zone, but the mechanicals are not in the flood zone. So we're also in front of the state for a variance on this. We don't have a hearing yet, but we've made our final submission. It is a significant hardship on my clients to have to raise this house at this point. It's completed, it's beautiful. We're very constrained by wetlands, we cannot expand the house to accompany the mechanicals in another location. I mean, that's pretty much it, I've explained this case already. It's a serious hardship to my clients, and it was not their fault at all.
What is the timing on this date?
We will have a hearing at the beginning of the year. After that, I don't know how long they take to render a determination.
Okay.
They're not waiting on us, are they?
They are not.
Okay. And they are looking at it from the same perspective as we are, that it's in, the basement's in a flood zone, but the mechanicals, while they're not in the flood zone, but they are in the basement, so.
And there are flood vents, which the engineering report supports. So there's really no potential destruction here.
Well, I mean, it's your applicant's, you know, risk, obviously.
My applicants are aware that if for some reason the basement flooded and the mechanicals flooded, even though the mechanicals are not in the flood zone, it would be their responsibility to replace them.
Probably cheaper than $287,000.
No, it would be.
Yes, I would think so.
And actually, the next time they put them in, they'd probably hang them from the ceiling of the basement.
Yeah.
And Katie, we discussed having language in our decision that would, you know. And Katie, we discussed having language in our decision that would, you know, leave us no liability for, right?
I don't know what, I don't remember that. I don't know what that would, I don't know what that means. I mean, the board is, the board is the board.
I don't think you have any liability here. Your, the building department actually has a liability.
We would be approving an application, a request of the applicant, so...
Don't forget, we have the support of the chief building inspector and the New York State DEC.
You know, I mean, I think Lori should go through the standards in chapter 169. Because this, you know, this board, I don't know if you've looked for any variances from this section of town code. I don't know if this board's ever granted any variances.
So I did submit that?
I know, but it's, is the board aware of what the standards are in chapter 169?
No, go ahead.
They're part of our, they're part of our submission. So 16921, what are we appealing? Well, part of the basement and the crawl space are in the flood zone. The zoning board shall hear and decide the appeal when it is alleged that it is an error by the building department. In this case, there was an error in that the building department issued a permit and passed all inspections except the final one. The danger that materials may be swept onto other lands to the injury of others. No. The danger of life and property due to flooding.
Excuse me, before you say that, why do you say no?
Because the, the house is not in the flood zone, the basement is in the flood zone. The basement has flood vents, therefore the water can pass through the basement. It's not going to knock the basement into someone else's house.
I'm sorry, the house is not in the flood zone?
No.
None of the house is in the flood zone, other than the basement?
Correct, and it has flood vents.
Which is uninhabitable, it's just crawl space, right?
That's correct. It's a storage place with some utilities down there. And if you look at the...
And utilities are not in the flood zone.
Correct.
So why?
If you look at the survey, which shows the flood zone, you can see the house is bifurcated, only part of it is in the flood zone. The mechanicals are not in the flood zone. And the only reason we're here is because if a part of the house is in the flood zone, the whole house has to meet the code. So...
Well, you just told her, told Katie that the house was not in the flood zone.
The house is... The basement is in the flood zone.
But that, but...
All right, all right. I know, I know, this is very confusing, I'm sorry. Yes, so if you look at...
The house is still in the flood zone.
Because part of it is in the flood zone.
Because part of it is. So that's a correction to what she said before.
Well, I mean, where's the, I just want to look at the survey and see where the line is.
Here it is.
So do you see the, do you see the flood zone line on there?
Yes, the dotted flood zone line. It goes through the house.
It goes through the middle of the house?
Yes.
Yeah, chopped it almost in half.
So, but that's only the basement?
Only the basement's actually in the flood zone because the first floor, of course, this survey doesn't have the first floor elevation of the house. The elevation certificate does.
Like, you keep on saying the basement's, the only thing is that the flood zone is the basement, as if the basement's attached to the house.
Understood.
Yeah, right, exactly. It's on top of the basement.
Is the house.
So, but, but because the basement's in the flood zone, then the house must be in the flood zone, is that correct?
Well, I'd like to, Lori, to answer that.
Even though it may be elevated above what the flood zone is, if it's attached, it seems to be, I don't know.
Well, let's let the witness answer.
Right, so the top of the next higher floor, which is the basement, is 11.4 feet above sea level.
Basement?
The house. So the basement is 2.5 feet.
Okay.
And the house sits, the first floor elevation is 11.4 feet, and the flood zone is 9 feet.
Okay.
But it's compliant even with the plus New York State, except for...
All right, so what it is, is that the house, the first floor of the house is compliant with meeting the flood zone requirements of 9 feet?
Correct. Well, it's actually 11, with a 2 plus, with the BFE, correct. All right, back to the variance standards, sorry. The danger to life and property due to flooding or erosion damage. We're not going to, like I said, the basement has flood vents, the water would pass through. So there's no danger to life or property, other than their basement flooding. And no erosion damage. The susceptibility of the proposed facility and its contents to flood damage and the effect of such damage on the individual owner. None, the mechanicals are not in the flood zone. The rest of the basement is storage. Most of the rest of these are not applicable. This one is, the availability of alternative locations for the proposed use, which are not subject to flooding or erosion damage. There are none. We can't move the house on the property, we can't enlarge the house to move the mechanicals to another place because of wetlands.
And you can't move the mechanicals to another place?
No, there's no room in the house to move the mechanicals up, and there's no way to expand the house to move them to another location.
What's the extent of the mechanicals?
You can't build a separate shed or something for the mechanicals? I mean, I don't know, it seems to me like you could place a mechanicals there.
What are we talking about in terms of mechanicals?
You're talking about your HVAC.
Wait, let her...
Your HVAC. Your, there's no oil tank down there.
Okay. So the HVAC...
Would be the only thing that's really sitting on the floor.
Okay.
Everything else would be like your electrical panels and all that stuff.
Right, 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 but that's on the wall.
Mm-hmm. And most of the HVAC goes up the wall, so that'd be all your vents and heating, so it's the unit itself. But again, it's not in the flood zone. A hot water heater, thank you, yes. The safety of access to the property in times of floods or ordinary, for ordinary and emergency vehicles would be fine. They would be able to approach the house because the driveway is not in the flood zone, they can get to the house, so that's not an issue. Generally, this is 16922 now, generally variances may be issued for new construction, substantial improvements to be erected on a lot of half acre or less in size contiguous to and surrounded by lots with existing structures constructed below the base flood elevation, provided that the items in the first section have been fully considered. As the lot size increases beyond a half an acre, the technical justification required for issuing the variance increases. It's really not applicable because the house is already built. We're not asking to build it in the flood zone. Variance shall not be issued within any designated floodway if any increase in flood levels during the base flood discharge would result. The crawl space has flood vents and the mechanicals are not in the flood zone. Variances should only be issued upon a determination that the variance is the minimum necessary considering the flood hazard. Again, the house already exists. Variances shall only be issued upon receiving written justification of a showing of good and sufficient cause. The building department oversight, the fact that they approved this three times, and then it didn't pass the final inspection, and then the chief building inspector signed off supporting the variances. Then you have that piece of paper. A determination that failure would grant the variance, that failure to grant the variance would result in exceptional hardship to the applicant. Yes, raising the house would cost in excess of $287,000. A determination that the granting of the variance will not result in increased flood heights, additional threats to public safety, or extraordinary public expense, create nuisances, cause fraud on or victimization of the public, or conflict with existing local laws or ordinances. It will not. This is only going to impact, if there was a flood, a portion of the basement that has flood vents and no other neighbor or public will be affected. Those are the variance standards that apply to this particular case.
And why did we continue this for such a long period of time? I know we started in July.
We wanted to find out about the cost of rise, raising the house.
Cost of raising the house, and there were other things that you provided in the packet.
We're also waiting for the Department of State. I mean, she needs variances from both.
So are you waiting for the state before you can issue?
I, I don't know. I mean, I'd be interested to see, again, have you, has this board ever granted any variances from 169? Have you found any?
I have not, no.
Yeah, I mean, I don't...
I don't know, and the state's not asking anything about your jurisdiction or where you're at with your determinations. I just know that the New York State DEC said we needed both, variances from both.
So are you suggesting, Katie, that we should hold this in abeyance until the state has issued its binding?
I don't, I don't know. I just was, that was one of the reasons that we were waiting, we were waiting for an update.
Yeah.
Right, right, I recall that. We were waiting for an update from the state, and you gave us that update stating that you were going to have a hearing after the first of the year.
All the final documents they required have been submitted, and she said she would not be able to get us on until 2024.
So the status of this property is now that they are there, but they don't have a final CO, right?
Correct.
But they're living in it?
I, I don't know.
Well...
Maybe.
They've been, and when was the house completed, construction?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. They don't have a...
Well, if...
If the state is required anyway, so...
Yeah. So Dave Kenji did the final inspection, and on February 26th of 2022 said to me, yes, the basement is not allowed in the flood zone.
All right. So my thinking is, particularly in light of the fact that, you know, I think Mike raised a good question about, you know, our board and liability and blah, 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 blah. I mean, number one, the applicant has certainly recognized, at least through you, that it's his risk to keep the, the mechanicals in, where they are. So I don't know, Katie, is that something we can ask for in terms of, you know, an inclusion in our decision?
Ask for what?
Acknowledgement of risk by the applicant.
What do you mean?
Acknowledge that, that, you know, by granting the variance, he recognizes that he is the one who assumes the risk if something happens to the mechanicals.
It's like a hold harmless, I guess?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, a hold harmless.
Yeah.
We can't ask for that.
No, no. I mean, I can put it in, you know, our testimony, Lori's testimony, you know...
Well, I would, but Lori is doing it on his behalf. I would like to know that the applicant, you know, if we get testimony or something, a hold harmless.
Can the applicant...
Submit an affidavit.
Yeah. Do an affidavit, give that up back.
You could touch your line about it.
They had already said to me they would, they know they may not even be able to get insurance for these mechanicals, and that's their problem.
Okay. I would feel more comfortable with the hold harmless, you know...
With the sworn affidavit, hold harmless.
Right, with a sworn affidavit, and maybe Katie can give us some guidance on...
I'm not directed anything.
No, no, all right.
I mean, I think if they acknowledge their responsibility, that should be quite a sworn affidavit.
They acknowledge the risk and they agree to assume all liability for any loss throughout the world.
No, 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 no.
Time in memoriam.
And just have, however the property is titled, if it's two people, have both.
You know, I mean, the section of the town code exists for this board to grant variances. I mean, it's not unheard of. It doesn't say, don't ever grant them.
Yeah, but this one, where he's particularly come up and said, you know, look, we assume the risk of keeping the mechanicals where they are, I would feel better about it.
Particularly because they're not in the flood zone.
Right, right.
He's not concerned about it.
Yeah, right.
Right.
And then the second question is, do we hold this in abeyance until we hear from the state? And...
We're going to do it or not. I say we close it.
I mean, I have no problem if we get the affidavit.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay.
Because if the state says no, then it doesn't matter what we say. You know, if the state says no...
We don't get our CO.
You don't get it.
Then we have an issue.
Then you have an issue.
Yes.
So, Michael, do you agree?
Or the house, or raise the house.
Or raise the house.
If I may, just, did you ever have to submit the hold, hold harmless for the building department?
Yes.
Because the, the building department has one that has a hold harmless form as part of the building department application.
All right, well, then let's, we should definitely...
That would cover the...
I'll leave that to the...
Oh, we need to see it.
I will submit it to you.
I just know it's a form, John, that they...
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying...
For what?
For the mechanicals.
It's not for the mechanicals, it's for flooding.
Yeah, for the highway.
Oh, they're different. What we were asking for is specifically for the mechanicals.
Yeah.
Okay, on that basis, I assume we could add, this is an Adam Lee, oh, okay, does that mean it's me?
That's you.
Just who's taking the application, just so I can...
I'll take it. Unless somebody else is dying to take this.
I already wrote your name down.
Kate, we're dying for you to take it.
Okay, thank you.
I already wrote your name down.
All right, okay, it's done deal. All right, so Lori, you're going to come up with, you know, an affidavit from, because we've heard from you, but we haven't heard from the other, so...
Understood, and I don't have a problem because they've told me.
Okay, okay. And then based on that, I think you can do that as, as part of a written submission.
Yes.
And that we will close the hearing.
Great.
And we will keep it open for written comments until 12:26.
Second.
With a decision on January 4th.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori.
Happy holidays, everyone.
It's been a struggle.
It's been long.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, is that it?
Yeah, that's it. Decisions.
Onto decisions, okay. Got my little sheet here. So I have a motion in John and Aaron Ferguson, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-64-2-54, for a property located at 450 Watermill Town Road, Watermill. Applicant requests variances for a proposed covered porch in addition to an existing dwelling, a shed, and for an existing swimming pool on a non-conforming lot burdened by two front yards. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code. One, Town Code Section 330-115C, continuance for a principal front yard setback of 75.5 feet, where 81.8 feet is existing, for a proposed covered porch and proposed addition to an existing dwelling. Two, Town Code Section 330-11, Residence District Table of Dimensional Regulations, for an accessory distance of street front, street front yard setback of 35.7 feet, where 110 feet is required, from the easterly property line, Sunny Hill Road. feet is required from the easterly property line, Sunny Hill Road, Town Code Section 330-76D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and Town Code 330-83C yards for a proposed shed to be located within the required front yard, and Town Code 330-11 Residence District Table of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory distance from street front yard setback of 37.8 feet where 110 feet is required from the easterly property line, Sunny, Sunny Hill Road, Town Code Section 330-76D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and Town Code Section 330-83C yards for an existing pool located within the required front yard. These variances are granted as shown on the survey prepared by David H. Fox LS of Foxland Surveying, last revised November 3rd, 2023, and the floor plans and elevations prepared by John Borliski PE dated 20, May 22nd, oh, sorry, May 26th, 2023. This decision is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, I have two more, um, Robert Hudlett, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-189-2-26. This property is for, this, I'm sorry, application is for property located at 6 Dunes Road, Hampton Bays, applicant requests variances to rebuild a dwelling damaged by fire and for proposed additions on an undersized corner lot. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code, therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code, one, for a second story addition on the north side of the property, Dunes Road, one, Section 330-84D pyramid height for a pyramid encroachment in the amount of 1,642 cubic feet on the east side of the property, 364 cubic feet existing plus 1,278 cubic feet proposed, and two, Section 330-11 Residence District Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal front yard setback of 39.6 feet where 40 feet is required from the north property line, Dunes Road, two, for a proposed portico on the west side of the property, Section 330-11 for a principal front yard setback of 33.7 feet where 40 feet is required from the west property line, Percy Place, and three, to allow the existing detached garage to be connected to the principal dwelling by way of a proposed two-story addition and second floor addition, Section 330-11 for a principal rear yard setback of 26 feet where 50 feet is required, as shown on the survey prepared by Kenneth Wolchuk, last revised November 29th, 2023, and the floor plans and elevations prepared by Douglas Vagay RA of DRV Architect PC, last revised October 16th, 2023. Grant to the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or otherwise may be required for final approval of subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonio.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, last one. Uh, this is for Lake Creek Properties Suffolk County Tax Map 900-118-2-8. This application is for property located at 30 Flanders Road Riverside, applicant requests variances in connection with the placement of signs and new proposed menu signs at the McDonald's Restaurant Drive-Thru. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and, and Town Code, therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of Town Code, one, for four freestanding signs, Section 330-205B3, general provisions in Section 330 Attachment 9, to allow four freestanding signs where only one freestanding sign is permitted, and two, Section 330-207A illuminated signs, to allow four internally illuminated freestanding signs in a village business zone, where said signs shall not only be allowed in highway business zoning districts, and Section 330-203A zoning districts, to allow the four standing, four freestanding signs to be constructed of different metal, where all such signs shall be made of only wood or wood appearing material, and four, Section 330-210.1C Design Guidelines, for the use of multiple colors for a sign where only three colors are allowed, one for background, one for contrasting color for the lettering, and the third color perhaps for emphasis, such as borders, motifs, or shading lettering to give it a three-dimensional look. Two, for a proposed wall sign on Mans, Mansard Roof. Section, a sign five on the site plan, Section 330-131.1V2 Restaurants, food, fast foods. Two, for a proposed roof sign to be installed on the front of the building where only a wall sign flat against the building is allowed, two, to allow the roof sign to be 48 square feet in an area where a maximum 24 square feet in total is allowed, and three, Section 330-205A3C, to allow the structural supports of the roof sign to be exposed where the support shall appear to be an integral part of the roof or roof sign and enclosed or otherwise hidden from view. Three, for two proposal internally illuminated, single-sided freestanding menu board signs, signs one and sign two on the site plan, Section 330-131.2D Restaurants Drive-Thru, to allow the proposed signs to have an area of 19.99 square feet each where no free sent, freestanding order or menu board shall be permitted, and four, for two proposed pre-brow board signs, three and four, on the site plan, Section 330-1312D, to allow the proposed to have an area of 10.3 square feet each where no freestanding order or menu board shall be permitted. These variances are granted for signs as shown in the overall site layout plan prepared